I'll be right.
Great, buddy.
This whole thing has been fun.
It wasn't a stop light.
It was a stop sign.
He's doing better.
Because that track, that road don't get any traffic.
Absolutely.
It comes across down there by the park he lives on.
I didn't buy doing it.
Yeah.
Okay, welcome everyone. To the month of May. Council meetings. Uh, first meeting I'd like to call to order tonight is the City of Lawrenceburg Board of Works meeting for May the twentieth, twenty twenty four. If we get a roll call, Mr. Fettie.
All right, we got Board Member Tommy Rowlett.
Present.
Board Member Brett Bondurant.
Yes, sir.
City Attorney Dale Welton.
Here.
We got President Kelly Malone.
Here.
We got Chief Snyder.
Thank you.
And myself.
Okay, um, I don't have any announcements for this particular meeting, guys, unless you do.
I have nothing, Mayor.
I have none neither, Mayor.
If not, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. First item, uh, new business I have is, uh, I just looking for, uh, permission for, um, Ms. Felix to post a maintenance, uh, position, uh, in the, within the department. This is not to hire an extra person. It'll be a, uh, a, a chance for, uh, one of our laborers to sign a s- take a signed bid. Uh, but, uh, the re- reason for the maintenance bid is that way we'll have four people in the maintenance department, uh, when they go on jobs, they go two and two. Uh, that way nobody's working without a, a partner for safety reasons.
So Mayor, that would be a building maintenance laborer bid?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah. The, what it, what it's gonna cost us is the difference between the hourly rate of the laborer and this particular job description for this job bid. Questions regarding that or?
I'm good.
Concerns? Okay. If not, I entertain a motion to approve that.
So moved, Mayor.
Uh, second?
All second, Mayor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? A motion will carry. Next motion is, uh, Chief Snyder, you wanna do this?
Yes, sir. Handle from here?
Yeah, go right ahead. Thank you. If it pleases the board, um, we have a officer retiring and, um, it's Jacob Jump. He's retiring on the twenty eighth, so I'm asking to go ahead with the process to post or to, uh, post that bid and then ask for a, a job, I mean, ask for a recommendation for hire. Um, it won't be a new hire. It'll be replacing as an existing officer that's leaving the department.
Okay. All right, any questions for Chief?
Have none, Mayor.
If not, I entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I have no additional new business for tonight, nor any old business for Board of Works.
I got, I got some old business.
Yes.
Uh, I would like to bring the name of Jillian Berlou, uh, for the clerk treasurer accountant to be approved and hired by the Board of Works.
Has she had her background checked and everything?
Yes. Well, I don't know if she's had a background check, uh, depending on satisfactory background check.
We'll make it contingent.
Contingent on the background check stuff, yes. I'm sure she hasn't had that.
This is Jillian?
Berlou.
Berlou?
B E R L E W?
B E R L E W?
Yeah, B U R, B U R, L E W.
Any questions from?
I'm sure Mr. Fettie did his due diligence on.
Took a lot longer than I thought it was gonna take.
It's been a while, hasn't it?
Yes, it has.
What, any other questions? If not, I entertain a motion to, uh, approve Jillian Berlou as, uh, I believe it's considered the, uh.
Accountant.
Clerk, treasurer, accountant position. Uh, pending, um, that all of her backgrounds have been done and, and are, uh, acceptable. Motion?
So moved.
Second?
All second, Mayor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved, Mayor.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Are you going council agenda?
Thanks, Chief.
See you, Chief.
All right, the next, uh, next meeting I'd like to call to order tonight is the City of Lawrenceburg Parking Recreation Committee for May the twentieth, twenty twenty four. I get another roll call, Mr. Fettie.
All right, we got, uh, Board Member Tommy Rowlett.
Present.
Board Member Lenny Fryman.
Here.
And we got Board Member Dylan Little, absent. We got Board Member Tony Abbott, absent. We got City Attorney Dale Welton.
Here.
President Kelly Malone.
Here.
And myself.
Okay. No announcements for this particular meeting unless you guys have anything?
I have none. Getting a lot of use.
They are getting a lot of use. Summer has come quickly.
Yes.
Okay, no other announcements. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
So moved.
Second?
All second, Mayor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. I have no other, I have no new or old business for the Parks Board or Committee tonight unless you guys have anything to bring up. If not, I entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, the next meeting I'd like to bring to order is, uh, City, City of Lawrenceburg Council Meeting for May the twentieth, twenty twenty four. If we all could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, the roll call, Mr. Fettie.
We got Councilperson, um, Tony Abbott is out, absent. Councilperson Dylan Little is absent. We got Councilperson Tommy Rowlett.
Present.
Councilperson Lenny Fryman.
Here.
Councilperson Brett Bondurant.
Yes, sir.
City Attorney Dale Welton.
Here.
Mayor Kelly Malone.
Here.
And myself.
Okay, announcements, board reports, streets, alleys, and curbs. Uh, Ludlow Hill, Mr. Fryman.
All good, sir.
All right, uh, Finance Department, Mr. Bondurant.
Nothing to report, Mayor.
And Fire Department, Mr. Rowlett.
No report.
Uh, I've got a couple of announcements that, uh, make you all aware of and the public aware of. Uh, next Monday, uh, Memorial Day, there will be a parade here in town. Uh, I'm inviting all the councilmen, uh, uh, to ride on the Seagrave if, uh, if you have, uh, the ability to do so or want to do so. Uh, the parade starts at ten, but we're meeting at nine o'clock over at the courthouse. Hope I got those times right, but I think I did. Uh, so if you can, uh, be over there at nine or right around there and, uh, and we'll, uh, it, it, as long as it's good weather, had really good, uh, attendance both in the parade and, uh, folks on the streets getting bigger every year. So we appreciate the Legion for doing that and, uh, to making sure that that keeps going each year. So. And then the other thing I wanna make you aware of is June the thirteenth with, which is the second Music on the River, uh, we are gonna have Mason Paris Night, uh, at Music on the River that night, sort of a send off from the city, uh, to the Olympics. Uh, this was one of two dates that he had available. Uh, like, I think he, this week he's in Singapore wrestling and then, uh, I think he, they leave early to go over to Paris, uh, although I don't think he wrestles until August.
I got you.
Something like that. Uh, but anyway, that will be on, uh, the thirteenth of June. Uh, we will do, uh, I would, uh, like, if, uh, council's there, I would like to have you on stage when we do the recognition for, uh, for Mason. Um, and we'll do that during the intermission that night, which will be around seven forty-five. So, uh, if you can be there, that's great.
I got a question.
Yeah.
Being Mason's gonna be there, is that the thirteenth, you say? Uh, if we got a ring or something, we set up, cause I really think, I'm feeling pretty good. I think I could take him. I'm just saying.
And, you know, I, I don't, I, I bet, I, I would almost.
No, I, I think he would try to do that, but I'm not gonna do it.
I would be willing to do that. I.
You'd have to sign a waiver.
Yeah, I would need a waiver.
We can't have a worker's cop claim.
Better check in insurance.
You were just complaining that you're sore from golfing. What do you mean?
Yeah, I've got bad news.
Well, I was feeling a little, I was feeling a little froggy right at that moment.
Well, we'll make sure that we play back at, at, at the, the, this, this, uh, audio at night and see if he's willing to maybe, you know.
No, don't you dare. He might grab me.
Make a, make a ring there out and, make a ring out there for you in the grass, so.
Are you, um, you, you don't, is it like in between or when you doing this presentation?
Intermission.
Intermission?
Yep.
Uh, how long, I mean, the reason I'm asking is there's been some organizations and especially like Eagles and different ones that wanted to present something to him and it's one of those things where he's only gonna be in town at very, very limited time, but I mean, is it one of those?
Probably won't be able to do it that night simply because we're gonna be short on time.
That's what I was wondering, how much time we're looking at. I mean, cause Kurti, the new president would, you know, if he had something, just two seconds just to give to him. But I was just wondering if, if, if you could mix stuff that in, but if you start one, then who knows how many you're gonna have.
That's the thing. I mean, if we knew, if we knew the number, probably we could try to make some time, you know, arrangements, but. Have, have other people?
Well, we just, we mentioned at the last meeting that I was just thinking, it was just one of those things where I thought, well, you know, he's only gonna be here a very, very limited.
It's very limited. It is very limited.
You know, very limited, so. But I'll, I'll, I'll just have him get ahold of you.
Have Kurti get ahold of you.
If it's one of those things, whoever they could do.
I don't know how to get ahold of him.
Very, very short, you know, or you could probably maybe even do it, you know.
No, I, I'd much rather have Kurti stumble through.
Now, what can Kevin do?
Kevin's not gonna do anything. We'll get them a copy of this tonight, too.
Move on.
Yeah, move on. But hey, you know, seriously.
I'll, I'll have him get ahold of you.
Okay, all right. Yeah, good, good idea. Okay, any other announcements? If not, I entertain a motion to approve the meeting, uh, or minutes from the previous meeting.
So moved, Mayor.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, new business, we got Land Consultants, uh, the rezoning of Florence Drive Estates. Come up to the podium, please.
Eric Lang with Land Consultants. I'm here on behalf of Florence Drive Estates LLC. Uh, the rezone request is for the parcel that lies to the west of Sycamore Estates Drive, uh, probably better known as the driveway that goes back beyond Walmart. Uh, it's about eighteen acres. If you were to measure the entire parcel out, however, there's only a fraction of that which is developable. There's a couple hundred feet deep at the most flat spot that exists adjacent to the road, and then it drops off pretty significantly beyond that. Um, because of its location, because of the fact that, that would probably work much better as a residential area and would, would not work very well as a commercial area, we feel that would be better utilized to be developed as some more affordable housing in that location. Um, so that is the reason for the re- seeking a rezone of that piece of property.
Any idea of the timing, Eric, that they're looking to do something?
They, I mean, if, if I had the time, they would have me working on it right now.
Okay.
So they're, they're ready to go as long as this falls in place. They're, they're ready to start working through house sizes. They've already got some ideas as far as some smaller houses that they've seen work in Northern Kentucky and, and in other areas. So they've got this vision, let's just say.
Okay.
Um, obviously this shoe had to drop before they got to spending much money on sorting things out, but.
These are owner occupied?
It's gonna be a combination of probably some smaller rental, but some owner occupied. It's just gonna depend on what works out. But yeah, that's ultimately the goal is something affordable, something small, but that you'll be able to have a garage and park a car off the, off the street there and, and something that, yeah.
All right.
Fills that gap.
Uh, has this already gone through zoning?
Yes, sir, your honor.
And so this is passed on to us with a favorable?
Yes, sir, the planning commission approved it.
Okay.
The only question I would have, and maybe I'm wrong with this, would there be a Mylar for this or not?
Not yet, not until they.
So they break it up?
They'll, they'll come back to us with a subdivision plat.
Gotcha.
Correct, yep. More than, nowhere near that yet.
I sort of wondered that because I was at the planning zoning and I didn't think to ask them.
Yep.
Cause I, I remember asking you how many units you thought maybe and it might be up to fifty maybe or something.
Yeah, we've not, not done the study to see how much we can fit, but we know we can fit a, a decent amount in there.
Good deal.
I don't know why I'm asking this, but did the planning mention any like traffic or anything, or was there any issues with that with the planning and zoning or anything?
They brought it up. I mean.
Traffic, yes.
We'll, we'll deal with that when we get the.
Yes.
Subdivision plat and, and their plans. When we know what the road needs to serve, we can deal with any potential, cause we, we don't have lights, as we all know. We've talked about that before, and we also allowed them to only do one sidewalk instead of two. So if that road needs to be adjusted based on their plans, we can talk to the developer about that when they come back. So this is just a rezone.
I was just curious.
No, it.
I had a hard time being out of Walmart the other day, that's why.
Oh, I brought, I brought it up, trust me.
Yeah.
It is hard to get in and out of there. Especially around Christmas time.
Yeah.
But there's a light there and, and.
Anytime we're like, yep.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, I entertain a motion to approve the rezoning of Florence Drive Estates.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Eric.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right. Okay, uh, I'm doing the next two here, I guess. Uh, on behalf of Mario, uh, we had a request, uh, the alley, uh, behind Whiskey's, uh, that runs from, uh, I'm thinking that's First Street.
Fifty to Second.
Second Street. Second Street, I'm sorry. Second Street to Fifty. Uh, obviously, uh, Whiskey's has been there in a mainstay for many, many years, and so the request came our way to rename that alley, uh, to Whiskey's Way. Uh, personally, I, I, we've never really had any issues with doing this for folks as long as it didn't create any other problems. Uh, so I'm open for discussion on this. If, if y'all have anything you wanna.
I have two questions, Mayor.
Yep.
One, they're spelling it without the E.
Yeah.
Okay. The second one would be, um, I know on the Second Street side, it's probably not so hard to put a pole in to name that alley, but the one on Fifty side, is there enough sidewalk in what?
They may not be able to put one there. We talked about that.
Okay.
May not be able to put one there.
People coming in and out.
Yep.
And whatnot would.
It's, it's tight anyway.
Yes, yes.
No, that's a good point, but, uh, yeah, we may not be able to do anything on that side and just put it on the Second Street side.
Okay.
Yep, good question. Any other questions? If not, I entertain a motion to approve.
So moved, Mayor.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, the next item is a transfer resolution to redevelopment. This is for any of the city-owned properties, uh, that are listed. Um, what resolution number would this be, Mr. Fettie?
You know what? That is number one.
Is that number one?
That's number one.
Wow. We haven't done our job here. Anyway, you see the, uh, the, the, uh, parcels that are listed?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and this is a resolution authorizing the transfer of property from the ownership of the city to the Redevelopment Commission. As you remember, we received these properties into the city's coffers, so to speak, through a, a bankruptcy and, and, and that, in that way, uh, obviously, uh, we've been landlords now for a few years on that, but, um, we feel like this is best suited to be under redevelopment's, uh, responsibility. Good enough to say?
Yep.
Yep.
We'd be considering the, the amended version that I passed out to you guys on Friday.
Okay.
It adds those, those fourth and fifth and six paragraphs. I think it adds, um, to the wherefore section where it says that, um, the revenue generated from the development agreements, any development, redevelopment does, will come back to the city and go either rainy day or general fund.
Rainy day.
Correct.
Hover, rainy day, hover mark directs, and then, uh, the rents would continue to come to the city and the property management group would stay and maintain. So everything kinda stays the same.
Okay.
That got added to the resolution on Friday.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions, guys? If not, I entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number twenty twenty-four dash one.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now, will those, you'll, we'll get, uh, transfer the deeds, uh, get the transfer done? Okay.
Yep.
All right, good. All right, I have no other new business nor old business for council tonight. Anyone else?
I have nothing.
If not, I entertain comments from the audience. Yes, ma'am? Could you come up to the podium, please? Smile.
I am the one that she spoke of about the pool situation and the coolers, uh, a couple weeks ago. Um, I have an issue with the coolers and stuff because I've been going to this pool for ten plus years. I bring up to eight grandchildren, plus my new great-grandson, who's a year and a half old. Now, how am I supposed to afford to give them something to eat? I can't even bring, and it's not even really a cooler. It's more like insulated bag, but last time I went, I was told I had to pack up and not bring anything. I couldn't, put it this way, we couldn't pack a lunch there. We couldn't sit at the picnic at the pavilion and make our own lunches. Now, I'm talking, there's nine of us. I'm diabetic. I can't be eating the stuff at the concession. I really need to bring my own drinks, but if we're not allowed to bring coolers, even if it's just a little handheld, and for me to bring lunch meat and stuff for all my grandkids, what am I supposed to do? I can't afford it. I'm on a fixed income, and they really need to, I mean, they, I know she said at the last one meeting that it was because somebody got caught with alcohol. Okay, punish that person, but not everybody that goes to the pool. You know, people that I can't afford to go to the concession. We can't bring cool drinks in. I mean.
Are all your grandchildren residents of Lawrenceburg?
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, I, uh.
It's really sad. I mean, I can't, their parents were, I got two daughters, they're single parents.
Yep.
You know, and I take them to the pool. This is my thing every summer. I get out. We have so much fun.
Sure.
I spend probably over half the time, maybe three quarters of the time, the two months that we do have, at the pool. So what do we do? I mean, there has to be a compromise somewhere. You know, if there's that concern about alcohol, check the coolers. It's that simple.
Well, it's not that simple. Um, but, but.
Well, they have people that work there that actually spot coolers and stuff, you know, that bring them in. I mean, it really is that simple, just to check a cooler.
Uh-huh. Well, we will certainly look into it. I, I, I think you got a good, you got some good points.
I mean, and it, not just for me, but for everybody that goes to the pool. I mean, not everybody can afford it. Half of them go across the street and get something, snacks or whatever, but still can't bring a cooler in, make our own lunches?
Mm-hmm.
It's gotta give somewhere. It really does, especially, like I said, my situation with all the grandkids that I take, you know, to the pool every summer.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so if somebody could come up with.
You do see our, our side of it a little.
Oh, I have. I understand it, but it's just like, like a kid cheating in school. Okay, punish the whole classroom because one kid cheated, you know? It just shouldn't be that way. There should be a way to check the coolers or, you know, as they're going in. It's not that hard. They're right there at the window.
Mm-hmm.
Somebody's standing outside. I don't know, but if they're that concerned, check the coolers, but don't punish everybody that follows the rules and need a break, you know?
Good point. Well, thank you.
Seriously.
You're okay.
And one other thing, this might sound silly, um, well, it does, but. Uh, they're bathing attire. Can somebody give, you know, I've got my youngest grandson, or my oldest grandson, I'd take sixteen. My great-grandson is a year and a half. Now, should they really be looking at women's butts at the pool? We're talking thongs. Their butts, nothing covering. I mean, can't they do something about restrict bathing suits? I mean, come on.
Well, I, the sad thing is, is.
Was that considered discrimination?
Well.
I was thinking about that when I wrote this down. I thought, would they consider that discrimination?
The sad thing is, I mean, you, you, you see, I mean, I, 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 I understand what you're saying there and, uh, but the sad thing is, is, you know, uh, just walking down the street, uh, we can't, we can't, uh, tell people what they can and cannot wear. Now, obviously, you know.
But they have rules and regulations at the pool, so, I mean, not on the street, but you've got rules that could be gone, but, I mean, if we're not allowed to bring alcoholic beverages in there, that's one rule. Why not, you know, cover the rear end at least half of it? I'm just saying.
I, I hear you. I, I.
If you ever, if you guys ever walked into that pool.
I've been over there, number.
Yeah, when it's open. It's just like, uh, my mouth just drops and I was like, I don't know, my, my granddaughters and everything, I mean, come on. I wouldn't put them in a bathing suit, so, not like that, but.
I hear you.
Just give it a thought, but, and, but the cooler thing too. I mean, the pool opens this weekend, so I'll be there. Whether I'm allowed to bring a cooler or not, that's up to you guys.
We will, uh, we will, we will, we will get some discussion on that.
Yeah, I appreciate it. I really do. Cause like I said, I've been going there ten plus years. Most of my grandkids knew how to swim, cause I throw them in the pool and they got no choice. No, I'm just kidding on that, too. Yeah, I'm always.
Next, you're gonna have DCS over at you. Hey, she said she throws her kids in. No, but thank you.
I swim with them. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thanks for bringing it up.
No problem.
Anyone else?
I'll see you with them. Yeah, we live across from each other.
She talking about you in that bathing suit, wasn't she, Lee?
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, thank you again.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's talk a little bit about the coolers. What, what do you guys feel?
Me, myself.
Me, myself.
I can give you the history, but go ahead.
Me, myself, I mean, a lady like that, or somebody's got a big family, and they go down there and they take their kids and they want to go swimming. And if they want to take lunch meat, and if they want to take their, their pop and stuff, if they're under that pavilion, why not? That's me.
When, when, when did the coolers thing go away?
It was, uh, three, four years ago, maybe?
That's what I was thinking, it wasn't recent, or not like last year.
Why, why, why did it?
During COVID, maybe?
Because of alcohol.
Is there a way that we can?
Rescind it?
To, to make sure that they don't have alcohol?
Decision, we can change it, but, but the problem, the, the only thing is, is it, it isn't, alcohol was a huge problem over there, did not realize that.
I think it's one of those things, if, if, if you can limit the size, so you could actually check it, I mean, if somebody brings in like a big.
Oh, yeah, big.
You're not gonna be able to check it. But if you limit the size of the cooler, where somebody can look in and see exactly what's in there, then that's a whole different ballgame.
And the other thing is, is people get creative. You, you.
Yes.
You know, they, they can, you know, i- if you allow the coolers. I understand, she makes a great point.
Yes, she does.
I, I get that, I mean, that's obviously why we, we don't charge for the pool. I mean, we give people an opportunity to, for entertainment, you know, at a reasonable cost, free. But I do get what she's saying. If we didn't have concessions, I, I would certainly understand the coolers. I do understand her reasoning with, you know, as many people as she's talking about, and I'm sure she's not the only one. But there, 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 there were some serious issues when it was going on. Uh, and that's the reason that, that decision was made back then. I mean, nothing's to say that we can't change it back until, you know. I, I'm gonna say, not if there's another problem, but it'll be when, it'll, it'll happen.
Why can't we say, if you know you're not supposed to have alcohol in there, and if they bring alcohol in there, they're out? And give them, you know, the first time, give them water probation?
That's what used to happen.
Well.
Because it was not allowed.
Yeah, but I mean, evidently, there wasn't enough ridicule from it, from where they went ahead and did it again. I would say, give them two shots, if you, you do it and tell them, hey, you're done.
Why two shots?
I'd say one.
You always should give somebody a second chance. My firm belief is, you, I have to give you a second chance every day on something different.
I hear you, but. I, the only thing, it might, you know, I'm not, I don't have a vote in this, but the only thing that I could agree to is if, if it was the size of the cooler. If it was a, like Mark was talking about, some big roll, for, you know, on four-wheel cooler, absolutely not. But if it's something, you know, to pack a sandwich.
Just some pop.
What's that?
And their pop.
Well, and that's, that's another thing I'm gonna tell you. People will get creative. They'll take a pop like this, unscrew it, put their liquor in there, screw it back, I mean, they put it in their cooler, they got six or eight of these, and it's nothing but a bourbon and coke. And that's what'll happen, it do, it did the last time, that's the kind of stuff that we were up against.
Let me ask you this, if you brought that in, it's full, you've got it in there, they can't take it out.
You wouldn't know it, how you gonna know it? If I tighten that cap on there, you, you are not gonna know if that's been unsealed or not.
No, I'm talking about taking it out of the pool area, taking it back out to your car, where are they gonna do it?
What I'm saying is, how are you gonna know if this is?
Oh, if it's.
You don't know, that's what I mean about people, people being, being creative, it happens. We're gonna fight it in Music on the River, it, it, people are gonna get creative.
Yeah.
And, 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 you know, we've already had a discussion with our police officers and such, but. People, people, people are smart trying to find a workaround. Yeah.
Are you allowed to bring a water bottle, like, or a glass, like I, I usually have a Tervis tub.
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna answer that. I'm not gonna answer that. I just, I would say that, yes and no. I, I just don't wanna, you know, if, if I sit up here and tell you yes, the same thing's gonna happen. Okay? It happens. We've got people leaving our events, carrying their Yetis, going to the parking lot, in the garages back before Dora, and coming back in the event with their Dora numerous times. Okay? Outside of following them to their vehicle, you know, and, and nobody wants to do that, nobody wants to rain on anybody's parade. And I, I, I feel for this young, this lady, I, I really do, but, and then maybe there's a, a compromise, but I don't know what it is unless you guys have a, something you wanna suggest.
But limiting the size of the cooler for her probably isn't very helpful, because.
No, it's not.
Remember, drinks for nine people.
Yeah.
You know, even if there are those little tiny packs or whatever.
Well, you could have, you could require a, a see-through bag like they do at school, that way it's easier to see.
But how, how do you do, I mean, what, what kind of cooler is that gonna be?
Well, you want them to be able to come, I can see her part, I mean, hey, we've all been there, and here she is with her grandkids, and there's what, seven or eight of them? And they, and they want to come and go swimming, and she can't afford to feed them there, I understand that.
The sad thing is, one or two people does ruin it for a lot.
Yep.
But, that, that's, it's not a. If you, if, I, I'll tell you what's gonna happen, you let, you let coolers back, you're gonna have a lot of people, you may catch one or two. There's gonna be fifteen or twenty you get by. Okay? And then we've got fifteen, sixteen-year-old lifeguards over there trying to deal with this.
What about, what about no drinks? You know, you bring stuff in, but no drinks.
That's, that was my thought as well.
You know, at least we're kind of meeting somebody.
Yep, meeting them halfway.
That's. I, I never thought about that.
Yep, I was thinking the same thing.
That way they could bring their sandwiches in.
Yeah.
And buy waters.
They can go to the water fountain.
I was thinking the same thing, I'm actually looking through to see what we have in our codes.
I'm, I'm just throwing it out there.
That's a good point.
Idea. I think that's a pretty good compromise.
I would say great meat.
Then you still, we still limit the size of the cooler.
I don't know if you have.
I mean, they're not gonna bring a pork butt in, you know, but. Right, it'd be small anyway, if they're just bringing lunch meat or fruit or something for, for grandkids and children.
I would just say, you, you say it's handheld cooler.
It's like, yeah, no hard top, just the.
No drink.
Not rollaways, things like that, but I would just say it's handheld coolers and, uh, no drinks.
No drinks.
I mean, I think that's a compromise, and it does help on the, you know, on the food side of it.
Yeah.
Is there a place at the pool to get, um, like, just water in a cup?
Yeah, there's a water fountain.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that, that would help, I think tremendously.
Only water in the pool.
So could we get signs, Mayor, made up, and post that out front as well?
Yeah.
People would understand that?
Yeah, we can do.
Coolers would be allowed with no drinks?
Handheld coolers.
Handheld, yeah, I mean.
Only, no drinks.
Well, now, you've got.
Food only.
Handheld coolers, are you gonna get, be able to get a loaf of bread in a handheld cooler with your lunch meat, your mustard and all that?
I'm gonna tell you something right now, I'm gonna tell you what we tell everybody, you can't plan for every what-if scenario.
Well, now, you're gonna have to have bread. You ain't gonna be able to go get some lunch meat.
Doesn't have to be refrigerated.
Do you carry the bread in?
You can.
There we go.
Okay.
You don't like this compromise?
No, I, 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 I do, I think it's.
Yeah, I, I, I think it's a good compromise.
That's not, that's not a bad compromise.
I'll, uh, I'll tell you what, I'll get with Dee tomorrow and make sure she's aware. And then I'll get Joy to work on signs, and we'll go from there, how's that? Try it. I think it's a good compromise, I really do.
Yeah, I like it.
I don't think.
I know we're up, we're kind of up against time here with the pool opening this weekend, but should we hear what Tony and Dee have to say first?
Well, I, I know what they're gonna say. Doesn't, you know, I, I, I have an idea what they're gonna say. That's, that's where I get my information, from the.
Yeah.
Manager.
Yeah.
And, and then I went over and witnessed it, so. But I think this is a good compromise to keep, keep drinks and alcohol out.
I agree, I think it's the only compromise.
Unless they're shooting up their watermelon.
You just put it in people's heads.
Yeah.
Way to go, Mayor, they're right in there.
Hell, you wouldn't do that, would you?
Nope.
Okay, uh, good discussion, we'll just, if you're okay with it, we'll just go ahead with that scenario for now and see what happens.
Okay.
I don't think we need to vote on that, but, do we?
Not unless you want to.
Yeah, I don't think so. Okay, any other comments? If not, I entertain a motion to review and discuss, or pay claims for board approval?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second, Mayor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, motion to approve all payroll reports and checks once properly certified.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, motion to adjourn this meeting. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I was waiting all day.
Meeting carries, meeting closed, sorry.